You know, call it a master plan. The fire department would have very dynamic and it's changing on several fronts right now. Having troubles, having volunteers and then everything that we do and provide and how we get our funds and the equipment. So we're working on that, but it has to have a plan in itself. It's got a five-year plan. A master plan person might not know all the... I mean, if they know all about sewer and what that means, or water and...
Well, I think sewer is pretty much gonna be handling for a lot of years.
Not necessarily. I mean, we have a lot of different things that are going on. Like, they wanna develop the airport property, that's gonna have a whole nother problem for sewer. We're gonna, you know, there's, there's talk about developing more on the terrace. And if they do that, that's a whole different problem. They develop on cemetery road, that's a whole nother problem for sewer. That doesn't, it's not as simple as just adding some gravity, maybe to get out there. You have lift stations, you have to plan for the lift stations. It's a future for those lift stations.
Is our new facility gonna be outdated if this happens?
If somebody came in here and built all these things today, how would you...
Right, so we need to have a plan.
Yeah.
On what to do next. But if this happens, this needs to happen. If this happens, this needs to happen.
And that's what we're, that's what we're looking for. Like I said, water and sewer, we have a better grasp on it than most more identified.
So, so let's get that on paper, that's a start, right? We need to be looking at the fire department and how we're gonna keep that going.
If you look at the staff report that's attached to the agenda, it gives you a layout for immediate to five-year, immediate to five to ten-year, and then immediate to ten to one-year.
This is all I had, I didn't break mine.
When am I be able to find it up here?
It, it lays it out. And we've done that exercise in-house, outweighing, you know, different options up to twenty years, what potential needs we were able to adapt.
That's an excellent story.
Scott got the right idea, but instead of going year, we went by how many percentages, how much room they got left. So if town builds up real quick and then shuts off, you're not mandated to build this thing because of ten years around.
There's no mandate to it, please just bear the suggestions.
There's seventy percent capacity in the sewer apartment, when we hit that number, we gotta start doing this. We at seventy percent, Kelly?
We're at seventy-five percent, which is what we're getting.
That's what you're doing.
So, we're, we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. I mean, we can update the water and sewer master plan relatively easily. It's having the master plan just set up for the fire department based on your population or whatever it is that it's based on. Just having something in general, if it's five separate plans, then it's five separate plans. If it's, if it's one overall plan that basically covers everything and then maybe, you know, water and sewer have their own, or fire has its own, or, you know, whatever it is. We should have a, a guide to lead us into the future. Otherwise, we are just doing everything half-assed, really out of reaction.
No, I think each department should have its own. Because it's going to be one all combined, but it's all gonna be based on the same premise.
Everything has to work together.
Right.
You know, it has one, it's compartmentalized.
Right.
I think, like, for instance, on fire side of things, we respond to a call volume, the growth of the community, our resources and our ability to provide that. For instance, the volunteers. We're going through the process right now of recruiting within the district family. And we're gonna have to see how that pans out. But those individuals that come on, unless they got prior experience, which I hope we are able to capture, but we don't, I have to look at, you know, someone coming on is not gonna be functional for us for six months at least. And then there's gonna be minimal ability for a year, 'cause it just takes that long to learn what we're doing, plus it's changing. This is not unique to San Miguel, every department in this county is gonna do the same thing.
You would think with our growth though, that we'd have more interested, we are, an increase in interest in growths.
Yes, we are, and that, and that's why I'm hopeful that we can fulfill the need by simply coming within the district. Scott and I sat down, went over of what we've done in the past, what was working, what wasn't working. And, you know, I've tried to bring in experience that I've gone outside, even our mutual aid area. We've had people from past roles coming out. But in the long run, it just doesn't work for us. And we have to have people that are in town that can be here in a moment's notice. You know, the way it's designed, that feature, the fire services, you know, it's, it's kinda going away. People expect a lot, but people don't seem to wanna give up a lot at all anymore. We look at our, our income, our budget, and figuring out ways to fund and have the coverage here. And that meets its challenges also. So the immediate need is to have somebody here that's gonna respond when that thing goes off twenty-four seven. That's the first and foremost, because if we're sitting here and someone's choking child over here that was nine-one-one, they don't have the time to wait. And if something were to happen, that would reflect back on us. So that, so that responsibility is huge. Now, to meet that very need, to set the premise at that, we gotta do some immediate changes. Someone used the analogy, maybe it was Joe or, or we were talking today. You know, we're on this plank and we're walking towards the end of it, you know? We're dealing with the guy behind us, that was you who was walking the plank.
You know?
And we're coming to the end of that plank where something is going to happen. So we have to do something to prevent the inevitable. So that's where we're at. And that goes with all the departments. I mean, Kelly could choose not to change anything until he comes to you and says, hey, uh, I'm flowing wastewater directly into the building now because we're over capacity. But I think that's gonna be extremely detrimental to this whole deal. Or we build out enough homes that, you know, our water storage capacity is no longer adequate for the, the district. And we're going through more water than what we can store on hand. So all those needs need to be met. And we'll, we'll put together a plan, I can say, on the fire side, where we address our immediate threats and needs. And Scott's put together something that can work on that, our five-year, even a ten-year. Because again, you don't go in and remodel an entire building for a problem we have today. And in five years or even two years, we come to you and go, hey, that was a great idea. We dumped a hundred fifty thousand dollars into a project, but we gotta tear it all down because now it doesn't work for us. So I, I agree with that wholeheartedly, having those plans, that's why we're doing this, that's why we're having this conversation.
Yeah, I, I'm in favor of having a, an overall master plan that can then get compartmentalized into the different departments. That way then we can, you know, spend the time to look at what's happening in life, what's happening in sewer, what's gonna happen. I mean, we're at what now, three thousand people about roughly, twenty-five, right?
Twenty-three to twenty-six.
Right.
Waiting for the census.
Waiting for the census, yes. Um, but our town has almost doubled since that's a district was, was formed. And at the continued growth, growth rate, I mean, in the next twenty years, we're only pushing eight thousand people if you keep that same rate of growth. You know? I mean, what's gonna happen at that point? We're gonna be hazard, not, you know, like, oh shoot, what, you know? We're gonna end up like Templeton, we're gonna be in a financial crisis, we're gonna be asking the voters to raise our taxes. I don't wanna see that happen, you know, or cut back services, that's not a good choice either.
Are there options for us to save money on an overall master plan? How much there could be offered as far as like fire by staff? Is there places where we could save money from consulting? I mean, we have a water wastewater that are existing. Could they be revised by Blaine? Could we, could, fire staff, do you have the time?
On the fire side of things, we have resources. To answer your question short, we would look at the issues, come up with a plan to address those issues. Keep it in mind a five and ten-year plan. And we do have resources either to just consult with or actually hire to write more technical plan for something that may be more advanced.
If we do, if we do end up doing a little shopping, I would appreciate it if that could be considered, things where we could save money like that if possible.
My approach on that at this point right now, we're already planning and trying to meet the needs. And like I said, the very first thing we're doing is recruiting from, we were gonna put out in the, in the bills, recruiting notice, put the banners back up with a plan of turning out applications, get people in here, let them understand what the commitment is, 'cause that seems to be the biggest thing. And then once we get a, a group of people, put them through the training that's required. About that time, I would say in the middle of that training, we'll start to know if that plan's working or not. The secondary plan to that also is providing the twenty-four hour coverage seven days a week. And we have it already in the budget to have a cover person periodically covering that six to seven a day. And we may have to adjust that depending on what you can, yeah, what we can do. But, but those are the things. And then I, I already spoke with, like, former chief of San Luis County, who now has a consulting business that addresses these very issues. I'm in a real good way with him, he's willing to consult with me for free to bounce questions off him. And then if we were to engage in any ideas, he's, you know, he's for hire also to take a plan and show how to implement it. And they're local. And it's a couple of...
That's strictly on the fire side?
That, that would be fire side, uh, but when I was discussing our plans and dilemmas and issues, he works for school districts, he does all kinds of things. So it's not just, it's governmental operation, it's not just one thing, so... And, and he's not the only one, there's, there's other entities out there that specialize in certain things. So, uh, on the fire side of things, we're addressing it. But that's why we're here, to, to bring some of the things forward, to tell you what immediate needs are. And then those additional needs incorporated, and so we're not getting outside the box of a five-year plan. But that, that's what we need to do. And we're working on that right now.
Well, I got, I have no problem investigating our avenues. As far as having people, you know, see what's out there, what it would cost, and then bring it back to us.
So you're suggesting put on RFP or...
I, is there any other way or...
Depends on what the costs are, if we're estimating a fifty or a hundred thousand, then we should put on...
RFP?
I can get an idea to what we're asking for, just a, like, kinda like a ballpark bit, ballpark ideas. So we would know if we're getting a good deal or not. I mean, what exactly are you getting for a consultant? What they could speed you a line of...
Well, that's the, yeah, that's the eternal question really, what are you getting for a consultant?
Hundred fifteen hours of that.
So...
And how many hours, right? I mean, the, I know...
What are you getting for the consultant?
If they consult, you know, they're really experienced and they've already got plans that are cookie cutter, and they adjust them to fit.
It could be done quickly.
Yeah, it could go quickly. Uh, but you have to have somebody build from the ground up and that back to get it.
It sounds like three out of five already have a fairly good working framework. Fire, wastewater, water, that could be revised and updated. Maybe not so much for lighting or, I don't know, what we mean for master plan for solid waste with a new structural situation, but...
We should have like a policy or something like that, right?
There's kind of, there's two plans.
There's a water and wastewater master plan.
Isn't there a lighting, something too?
Lighting standards. Well, we can, you know, water and wastewater master plan is gonna be updated. Very shortly, we're gonna be going after our recycled water master plan. So, you know, the, the kind of the scope for a facilitator to do the district-wide master plan would just be to pick up the pieces as far as, you know, formalizing a fire master plan and then making sure that all the master plans work together. So that we're, you know, we're going in the same direction about five to ten years.
And the other question is to ask, what is the end result that we're looking for? Looking for San Diego CSD being in existence the same way it is, you know, today as it is in thirty years? Are we looking at heading towards incorporation or heading towards what direction question that happens to be asked? I hear someone laughing in the back.
And that's, that's something that you really need somebody that is outside looking in at what we're doing. To say, well, this is your big progression so far, where is the natural progression going to lead you?
Right.
So we can do a lot of the, the late work and the pre-planning work ourselves. But a lot of times it takes somebody from the outside looking at what you're doing, what you've done, to tell you if you're on the right track or not.
Like I said, investigate, get back to us?
Yeah.
That's what I'm hearing.
There are some things that we'll be bringing to you because we still have to address the immediate need. We'll do every effort we can to make sure the immediate needs that are, that are filled are gonna meet the master, you know, the plan. We'll try to get plans together so you got a direction. And then when we are talking about these things we need to do to get there, that's when the discussion, where it fits in the plan. And, you know, we guys know and we're all in agreement.
I have a question, Steve. Have we, have we been successful in contacting the Rowan regarding...
Waiting to hear back from their property management group?
And is that pistol light at the end of the tunnel or...
It's on the train.
It's on the train.
Blaine's actually the one working on contacting them and he's waiting for them to call him back. He said his previous dealings were, that they've been pretty open to most things, so...
That's good.
It just depends on going yet, I guess.
That would solve a lot of problems.
I think their biggest hangup or anything we've addressed here was, they don't like adding additional crossings. For population and size and distance apart it is between crossings. You know, if we were like to say we wanna put a cross in at Sixteenth Street or something like that, they don't like that.
That's already been discussed.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, so... But adjacent to and around it, if it's not disrupting...
Depending on how the population growth goes, though, they, they may have to.
Yeah.
They may turn into a big...
Right.
To do, but, I mean, how did you get the second crossing here, give?
It's a big crossing.
How much money was set aside in the two eighteen budget, uh, plan for building out this building?
This building?
Yeah. For finishing, was, was anything, was anything, was that considered at all?
I don't think that any money was put into or in the rate study for this building.
Right.
Since it's not actually...
Assuming it wasn't finished, John, we had to move into unfinished.
Oh, I would, I would.
All right, so we have money that we set aside in the two eighteen for additional staff or not for this particular building?
So, let's move into the discussion of district functional space.
Yes, for another public comment, first.
Is there any other public comment?
Oh, Kelly, on that, I heard that rumor too about they could shut us off if a war broke out. The guy told me, says, if we did that, we'd have to shut off the trailer park at the north end, south end of Camp Robert, all the workshop, 'cause that's where you're gonna go through. Well, that ain't gonna happen. So now, really, I don't know what, I heard the same thing, well, I want math.
So, well, basically to that question, that basically they've already gone through the upgrade of their treatment plans. So there would be no, no incentive for them to come to us, we would go to them.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's a long way to go.
And we're already here, so...
Yeah, we're already here.
Can we go back to your question?
Oh.
Of two eighteen and the, we were referring to this building? Is it the building or the building or...
No, not that. I was just wondering if, if there was any plan to keep any part of that here in which there was money budgeted to do.
In a discussion that, uh, sorry.
Oh, money budgeted and...
Well, when, when, when the two eighteen study was done...
Yes.
Basically, that's like a master plan of, of determining what rate you need to...
For the next five years.
Or to pay for what immediate needs are. My question was, is, was this building considered, the use of this building considered in that?
Okay, break it down, okay, I thought you meant that, and when I said that, I was like, I believe you.
No, and what I'm hearing is it wasn't.
Right, okay.
Even though, well, it doesn't matter, it wasn't, so...
Well, the problem also, and the problem here is, is the walls and the snakes is one thing about developing here. If the sewer plant, the employees, everything needs to expand, we don't have room in here in the current design to expand for CSD. As a group still, the way we are now.
Well, in a perfect world, I would see us building a new fire station and giving this to the utilities.
That is an option, but... And expanding this one was an option, and splitting, the way we're currently talking about was an option. And building a new station that is a very, a property that's...
It's, it's millions. I understand, I mean, I was right on top of it when this property was being given away. And I didn't know that I was being lied to, that it had already been offered to us and ignored.
Right, and currently with that piece of property, we're looking at current market value most likely from the county because they have it listed as high-density residential.
Well, we're still waiting to hear on that.
That's the latest.
Well, the meeting that Mr. Pashon was at, he said that he was gonna look at it.
I'll check with him again, but that was the last I heard was that they were, they were gonna have a hard time giving it to us and giving up that high-density housing, especially since...
Then why did they offer to us in the first place?
Well, they, when they first offered it to us, not that we need to rehash this every time, but... The first time they offered it to us was in the, the tax or, or the tax stuff. So there's no consideration of anything at that point. But then once the county got it, assumed it. And then their real property, real property group has to actually look at it, see what the value is and see what it's for and all that. So if we could've got it for the original fifteen hundred, then we would've been golden, we could do whatever we want, but... Missed the, missed that goal.
Okay, so let's move into item two. Anywhere else? Oh, you have something more?
I, I have one question in my mind still about the, um, the facility on the wall over there.
We're about to talk about that.
Is that item two?
That's item two. Functional space.
Okay, that's not, that's the fire department thing, right?
It's everything.
It's all, it's all one's...
It's all together.
Yeah, one's need for district master plan, which we agree we need one. I don't agree on how, and now we can discuss all the functional space that the district has and how it would be best utilized. Who wants to start?
Okay, so, this has a lot of components to it. I know Scott spoke a lot of working to gather information he gets requested, based on immediate, immediate to five-year, immediate ten, immediate to twenty. You guys have heard the plan from Kelly, like I said, that was on the wall. You guys had your questions about some of the concerns with it, but how we're gonna address any of those concerns if that's the plan and what alternatives are there. So Scott, do you wanna talk about the fire department and the different options you looked at?
Surely. That's what you've got printed out here. That's the staff report right there. And I did some investigation on the existing structure, just to get my head, my head around, you know, what's really going on, what's going on here.
Before you continue, can you tell me what grid line two is?
Grid line two is that one right there.
Okay.
It's the wall. That's, that's grid line two. I have a set of arms, if you want to have that.
We have to understand what the...
Right, that's grid line two.
Okay.
The original permit for the building was pulled in nineteen ninety-nine? Nineteen eighty-eight, and the building was completed in two thousand, um, to, to estate. And then there was another permit that was pulled in two thousand and three for additional work. My assumption is that it was for this space. However, the permit was never finalized, so it had an administrative final performed in twenty eighteen. They just wanted to get it off their books. So it's still an enigma to exactly what has happened here. If you look at the plans, the plans show clearly different dimensions and identifies different uses for the space. So I think with some exploratory, um, investigation, we can figure out, you know, what's, what's able to stay, what has to, what has to go. So as, as far as the building is concerned, in its current state, we did move forward with, you know, the projects as, as laid out. And they include a few different things. If you look at concept number one...
Well, some of the things we'd have to consider is, can we identify another place to build another fire station? Can we afford to build another fire station? Is this going to be a live-in space or is it gonna continue being a volunteer department?
Well, the goal was, the takeaway from the last meeting was modify this building with the CSD employees gone as solely a fire station. That's what this lays out. It has no accommodations for additional stations or relocation of stations. The, the direction was this space with those needs. So that's how, that's how it's laid out. The immediate need would be to have, like Rob has discussed, uh, besides the two of us that are on twenty-four hour, you know, availability to have, the ability to house either a firefighter or a fire captain and a firefighter. So we, we provide a temporary building outside. And I have an attractive op, option. I have, uh, we just found out we have another option that's available to us today. It would take some work to get that done, but an older modular office trailer that could use a remodel. We could probably get that for, we get it for free, we probably dump about ten thousand dollars into it. That would accommodate our immediate need to have twenty-four hour staff here. That would provide us the opportunity to split this back office into two spaces. One space would be a captain's office, the other space would be a beat station for the sheriff. So they would have a back office in this corner, that'd be split. The fireside needs access to the electrical panel, so that's how, that decision was made. Both the chief, the assistant chief would share the front office where the accountant currently sits. And the reception area would remain unchanged. This room would remain unchanged. We would complete the upstairs at grid line two, so we had a space to have a planning meeting or, you know, whatever else we'd need to have up there, a day room of sorts, so people could hang out. And leave the equipment room the way it is. That would probably hold us for five years. And then we move on to, you know, a current, we could do it now, or we could lay it five years and do a five to ten-year plan. I always put current in front of it, 'cause there's no reason to wait. And then all of a sudden, we're behind the curve again, so we're well behind the curve as it sits.
What do you think, Scott? When we were talking about this modular outside dish structure for the purpose of housing a coverage person, one, because you can't legally put him in here until this meets the separation between the apparatus. And second, the idea would, is to get this to meet that sooner than later, so that you don't have twenty-year... The module's not an answer, it's a, it's a temporary...
It's a temporary.
To fix the need.
That's for five-year, we said that thing goes away.
To fix the need so that we can address the issue here.
And just for conversation...
And you say remodel for ten thousand dollars?
No, no, that would be on a trailer that we would get for free. It's an office trailer, and it could be converted into a living space. We get the trailer for free, we'd probably have to spend ten thousand dollars to put air conditioning in the bathroom, hook it up and, and put it outside on the CSD's property next door. The other option is to buy something that's a little nicer, a lot nicer, but not super high-end. It would have basically two living quarters with two bathrooms and a little office space and a kitchenette, so we could stay there comfortably. The cost of that is around forty thousand dollars plus connection. The upswing, or the upside of that is in three to five years, and we move on to something else. We could sell it, we could repurpose it, it's not a permanent solution. The older trailer with the remodel, we'd probably have to give it away, because I don't think we would have a huge, you know, demand for that thing. And I have, I have a brochure, it, they're just, it just looks like a little tiny house, it's kind of attractive. You guys wanna see it, I can pass it around, I have the floor plan.
The county let us do it?
What's up?
Would the county let us do it?
Well, Station Thirty right now is going under major renovation, and they're housing their fire staff in the...
It's temporary, cancelled, disregarded, it's temporary, disregard nineteen oh two.
So they would more than likely allow us to do that.
But it's temporary.
It's temporary, exactly, it would be temporary, that's to get us to the five-year mark. I think that we should, you know, like Rob suggested, we move further along the path. I mean, it would be great to get to the, to do a ten-year outlook plan, because we don't really know what's gonna happen. All these housing projects could come at once, they could, they could come piecemeal, or they could not come at all and be turned into vineyards, just like, you know, when Gala bought that property. So do a, do a current to, to ten-year or a five to ten-year? So, do, do the current to the ten-year or a five to ten-year plan, that would, that would include completing the upstairs space to have living quarters up above, we would have a sheriff's beat station down here as well, you know, office spaces, captain's office, that would remain about the same. This room will remain intact, so we would still have our training room here. The workout area up above, it could be repurposed into a day room of sorts, it's kind of an odd space.
Okay, so if you continue using this room as a training room, what do we do with the space, that enormous space that's out there?
Well, there'd be a training room for the fire department.
Not a meeting place also.
If need be, but that would be dedicated to the fire department. The goal was, and the instructions were to make this.
Right, I get it.
For fire department. So we could conduct training here, it's, it's limited in size, but so is our department.
But if we went ahead with this plan, and your goal's consistent of coming here and gathering apparatus, and then going out to your training facility, you have a training room and your training ground.
The training facility is basically our C train containers, and we're gonna do our, our training. It has nothing to do with this meeting, we'll do onsite briefings out there, whatever the case may be. After action review, we'll be always, we'll come back to the station as we normally do. We leave from here and then go where we're going.
So the fire department has no intention of using that training facility?
No, if we were, if we were gonna hold a class, let's say, and we.
But that's it, not, not Tuesday night.
No, we would definitely stay here, this, the whole goal is to keep us here, isolate us from the CSD.
We'll give their role this time.
Okay, excuse me, I, I just.
So, we would, we would provide, um, living quarters upstairs, basically, we'd take the two rooms that exist and then turn them into sleeping quarters. We already have an existing bathroom up there, it would suit the need, the shower down here would suit the need. It would, it would work, it would work for, you know, probably ten years out. The ideal situation, what would be the cost associated with that? It's hard to say, it's, it's a moving target, and without plans, you know, nobody's gonna come out and give you their time and try to swing a ball at a bat that, you know, the ball doesn't exist. But at the end of the staff report, it does say that before we move forward, then we would do conceptual drawings and then get, you know, budget pricing for what we're looking at doing. The, the ultimate plan is something that Rob came up with, and I, I like it. It would be the, to twenty of the year outlook, and that would be to build an apparatus bay on the property next to us, which the CSD owns, it would be a basic building, nothing special, resemble this building, and look something like that. A three-bay apparatus bay, this side would only be ten feet, that would provide us locker space, a space for our air machine, SCVAs, equipment storage, tool area, and we have a drive-through apparatus bay. The drive-through apparatus bay would require that we get permission to use this back easement from the railroad, it probably wouldn't be that difficult, we'd do some road improvements and we'd get.
That's a matter.
There's a, there's actually a.
There's a twenty-five, there's a bumper getting easement.
Yeah, before the railroad.
And if I, if I'm mistaken, if you look on the APM maps, the people who own this property over here maintain and own that easement. So there's some work that would have to be done, so we either remit to the railroad trap, or we, we get an easement from the neighboring properties to allow us to use that.